It is about 7:03 or 4, depending on the time. And we are going to call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I'm going to start with roll call. So we'll start with Nicole and just kind of go down and introduce ourselves.
Nicole Davidson.
Richard Gordon.
Tim Leducer.
Michelle Williams.
Tom Finney.
Olivia Fairchild.
And just a note for the record that Tim and Olivia are sitting, are alternates today, sitting for full-time members who are not here, Kirk Scott and Jason Debo. And if we could get up and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, fantastic. Do we have any additions to the agenda today? No? Okay, great, hearing that. Public delegation. So this is a time that members of the public can speak to the commission about items that aren't essentially items on our agenda, so aren't items subject to public hearing or decision by the commission. So anyone here that wanted to speak to the commission tonight? Okay, great. So we'll get right into reports. Any communications? Okay. I think that that might be an old, my name keeps getting attached to zoning representative, but the last meeting was canceled.
The meeting was canceled and I was not aware of a reschedule, so I did not attend.
And that is fine. We did read in the paper about the decision on the affordable housing development up off of Holmes Road area. Any other items that we should be aware of?
Yeah, I think that was pretty much the only thing that they had. It was a special meeting specifically.
Okay. Great. Our ex officio is unable to make it today, Mr. Weber. He did not have any updates for us. They have a short meeting scheduled for July, so they just had the one meeting. Any update as the planning director?
Not since the last meeting. But the team is in the process of updating their flood maps. It's a change, so it's going to be here and kind of replace.
Okay. And I do not have any updates on our subcommittees or a chair report. So let's go ahead and move into the approval of the minutes of July 18th. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes from the July 18th meeting.
Thank you, Olivia. Any seconds?
Second.
Thank you, Tim. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstention?
Oh, abstention.
Okay, two abstentions and four approvals. Thank you very much. No public hearings tonight, no applications or referrals, so let's get to the real reason we're here, our subdivision regulation revisions. So we have been looking at these for quite some time, and I think our goal tonight is to make sure that we're all buttoned up with the things that we wanted to make sure were reflected in the changes so that we can go ahead and schedule a public hearing, which is a necessary next step in adopting them. So Gary, I'm going to hand it over to you.
So the draft that I handed up to you this evening is the draft that accepted all the changes that were made in the last meeting. I would just note the provisions that we're doing, the primary ones, section 4-7, revisions to lot line configuration. Basically, this will allow the planning directors to deny lot line revisions that are compliant with the community board's planning permission for that action. Section 4-14-3, this was a GRT requirement, so we're eliminating the GRT requirement and replacing it with environmental review and evaluation by this commission. It's a pretty lengthy section that I added, basically if you want essentially environmental impacts data resulting from that. And the last was. It's 4-2-16, under taxes. Called upon the section taxes, taxes must be paid current on the property subject to subdivision documentation and factually indicating that the taxes are current shall be submitted for the application. And in event the taxes are not current at the time of application, the commission shall be given the application as an exception. Those changes, if you don't like the language, if you don't want to modify it, but I think most are comfortable with it. So with that, I think we'll send these to a public hearing or adopt them. That being said, there's no statutory requirement to necessarily defer them out to the Board of Selectmen, but I think it's courtesy to do that, as well as give comment from our voting favors to council governors, we do have to refer to them because it would affect the element of environmental freedom of the town boundary.
Right.
So, and as well as to give our zoning commissions a vote in on them. As some of you may or may not know, the Inland Wetlands Agency is also making some changes to their regulations. They refer their regs to the Natural Resources Commission for review as well to get comment from them and actually have some pretty good comments, so maybe something.
Okay. So let's talk first about the revisions and then about our next steps procedurally. I think that there were a few other things we discussed at the last meeting that I just, seeing these for the first time, want to see if we addressed. So we talked a bit last month about the pre-application sketch plan and whether or not that was actually something that was kind of still happening in practice and if we wanted to keep it in here.
It still happens in practice because they have a basic down staff.
Okay.
It doesn't have to remain in there, but I think it's integral that at least at some point, down staff.
Yes.
And choose not to.
So, but we're requiring it here.
Right.
Do we want to enforce the requirement, is what I'm saying? Like, I think, I think if we're going to put it in here, it should be part of that completion checklist.
Did you use the staff?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Because it doesn't read as optional. Section 4-1. And then again, section 5-1. So I'm not recommending any changes to those sections, but I'm recommending that the commission consider enforcement of that requirement since it's in there. And I'm not sure that we really.
Well, in order to enforce it, probably need some sort of confirmation. Here we have no fee or application requirement, so that may be modified, just say we provide a form for you to fill out and I guess submit that form of your application.
Well, it's not required for the review, but the review, but the sketch is required for the application. So I don't necessarily think we need a fee at that time. They might meet with you and decide not to do it. So I think it'd be a bit premature, but I think that if we're reviewing an application, we should have some kind of assurance, either, maybe even just a letter from you, that this meeting and general sketch took place.
You could require the sketch to be part of, if you say you want the sketch, could you require the application?
I think so, because it's covered in, it's covered twice in section 4 and section 5, and it's saying, "A sketch plan shall be submitted by the applicant as a diagramic basis for informal discussion with the planning commission or staff regarding the design of a proposed subdivision. Sketch plan submission is required by the town as a way of helping applicants and officials develop a better understanding of the subject property and helps establish an overall design approach that respects the site's special or noteworthy features while providing for the density permitted under the zoning regulations." So we're requiring all of these things, I'm on page 35, section 5-1. We're requiring all of these bullets in the sketch. We're saying that the sketch plan shall be submitted and that it is required by the town as a way of helping applicants, et cetera. So I just think that we should note in our approval whether or not that requirement has been satisfied. So it's not so much a change in the regulations as a change in process for this group. Right. Yeah. And then the only other note that I had from last time was on section 11 in enforcement, and we discussed some investigation into the potential to levy fines in the event of non-compliance. And I didn't know if there was any further discovery on that. We talked about, you know, this section really not having a penalty other than a cease and desist, which I think in some cases, the cease and desist is null if damage has been done, right? So let's say there's, let's say section 11-2, enforcement of erosion and sediment controls, let's say that the appropriate controls are not in place and a bunch of runoff reaches a critical waterway. I don't think, my personal view is that a cease and desist, once the damage has been done, is not necessarily adequate. Particularly if remediation efforts would be required by the town or some kind of repair situation or.
Human, but I think when you have cease and desist, you have to repair it anyways, right? The town will require it, the engineer and town engineer will make you do it, right?
Well, we would, we would put pressure on them to do it with the order. If they fail to comply with the order, we would then request an injunction.
Okay.
If they fail to follow the injunction, then they're violating the court order.
Yeah.
Additional fines, which have been, the state legislature just updated the last session. I think it was from $500 today to $1,000 today.
I think, though, from a town financial perspective, you know, in a situation of non-compliance, your resources are going to be dedicated to that without compensation from the non-compliant party. And I would really like to see some way to protect taxpayers from that.
So we can certainly add language.
I don't think we need to specify what the fees could be, but just give ourselves the ability to levy them.
I believe it may be ordinance to adopt the fines.
Okay. Like.
But that said, the Wetlands Agency also adopted a section, we then referenced that in fact that they can levy fines.
Right. So what I was, my thought here is that we build into the regulations the ability to levy fines, and then the town ordinance would set the amount of those, essentially like the rate schedule, you know, the fine schedule, or. But if Inland Wetlands has come up with some good copy on that, I would not be above, I don't want to call it plagiarism, because Larry, Gary probably wrote both, so.
I actually, I didn't write on the question, but I'm actually going to go right into your own. I don't see it.
We do have a subject matter expert among us who might be able to nod whether or not there are sections on fines in these zoning regulations.
I've had no.
No, okay.
I actually don't see my Inland Reds itself, or this, we just do by orders.
So I have a question about the fines. Who, like, who is enforcing and collecting the fine?
So Gary is our enforcement agent for both subdivisions and wetlands. Bill Mulholland would be the zoning enforcement officer. Building inspector would be the building enforcement. So that would be the person who would determine whether or not the development was moving forward as approved, or if there had been some deviation that caused it to be not in compliance with what was approved.
That makes sense, yeah.
I just have a relative schedule, I don't have the fines yet.
And these are state or municipal?
These are our.
These are our.
These are town ordinance.
Okay.
So we have no more than $1,000. Again, pursuant to statute, we're allowed to issue citations for violations of the regulation. Maybe some sort of language like that, planning commissions may issue citations for violations of these regulations.
I think that would be great. So that same, that same statute may apply. The planning commission is hereby authorized to issue citations for violations of the subdivision regulations. And then we would determine the schedule of fines. The Board of Selectmen would determine that through town ordinance. Is this commission comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Seems to be based on a state statute, I guess, they can indicate, general statutes.
Who can issue them with this all ordinance? If there's a hearing procedure.
Great.
If there's a hearing officer for that, maybe that same person will be delegated.
Is it you? Is it you?
No, no, I, I'm the one involved with the order.
You would issue.
So I would go to, I go to the meeting, I've only been to one. We've only had one. So I went, it was a $3,000 fine. Hearing officer heard the case and basically dropped it down to $1,000. The other issues on that one on the table, like the fine for where you found that were not, kind of non-issueed, I said, well, you did violate your permit, so that is $1,000.
Okay.
Yeah, you pay it, debate it.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with putting A-line in the regulations, and then if we could put on the agenda for our next meeting, the review of a planning version of this ordinance that perhaps we have a chance to review and vote on whether or not we'd like to send it to Board of Selectmen for their review and possible vote? That, move that consensus there? Okay.
So I think for the regulations, I would say something like the planning commission may issue citations and/or fines for violations of subdivision regulations for subdivisions. Approve, shall we?
Yes. I think that's great.
That way it's a man.
Right.
It's in there, even though you can't actually issue.
We might.
Yeah, I don't know if you're.
We may.
Until an ordinance would be passed.
Right. Which we're going to work on separately.
So if, if someone may comment on that during public hearing?
Okay.
Say, well, you can't do it until there's an ordinance, so.
But it doesn't say we shall, it says we may. Okay.
So I can add section 11-2-3, the planning commission may issue citations and/or fines for violations of subdivision regulations, subdivisions or pre-subdivisions.
Yes. Would that be 11-2-3, or would it be 11-1-6? Because I don't think it's just on erosion and sediment controls, and 11-2 seems to be on, maybe it's 11-3, its own thing. Because I, it's not just about. Right. So let's say we approve a driveway on lot 5 and it goes in on lot 4. That would be, you know, a violation, but not related to sediment controls.
So call it section 11-3?
Sounds good. Great. Did anybody have any other items that need to make it into this final version?
There was a, it's a part of making additional changes. Section 8-2-7, that ends three. So we have standard residential plus open space, so what I thought would be appropriate there is add in the conservation zone development.
Yep.
My thought was maximum of 2,000 feet, and the number of lots would be based on underlying the zone as it stands. The reason I took 2,000 feet is because elsewhere in the document, we discuss, we indicate that no road can be, in a CDD, can exceed 2,000 feet unless they have a second, with a vigorous DMS.
That makes sense.
So I thought we'd add that at least if it could occult sacro.
Nice adds on the streetlight specifications, too.
Those are in there?
Yep.
They should be placed at per tangent and aligned by either ever source or some of the public.
Like one really small thing. We're back to the taxes section, if we could just like move it up to be 4-2-15, and then the other data would be 4-2-16. I don't know if that's possible.
I agree with you.
Yeah, page 22. So where it says other data and information and the taxes, if we could switch those. Yeah. Just so it doesn't necessarily look like an afterthought.
And then I often find you to become a panic stage, completely new. It's a little overdone, you can finish it, but it's very crazy. Kind of goes over the current plan that we're looking for. Mark, it's a checklist. So I think that's preliminary plan checklist, that would be like a used sketch.
Yes.
And then the final plan, maybe they need to release a mix. Include a basic information, site context plan, existing conditions. Actually, ask for some location strengths. And then they have these proposed subdivision plan set, all the existing, this is where I got a little kind of confused here for the difference. Final plan versus the proposed subdivision plan.
I don't think it's redundant, though. We sometimes need to refer back to this.
So anyway, this is pretty much what Waterford checklist was. And so we get to do additions, landscaping, which is a petition control, road utilities, supplementary information, supplementary information, supporting materials, which also include anything on the necessary decisions. And then the final plan set checklist, the ACBD, and all standard stuff, traffic, electronics available, that's really, you have a parent document. And all the basic information for the context plan. So it's, we kind of suppose if you're not doing a CDD, you propose a conditional, you submit just subdivision plan. Which is kind of difficult in that the regulations says they're written.
Yep.
And then we have added to the planning checklist. Revision record would then be updated. So it sounds like the only additions I would need to make are the last two we discussed, section 4.
Right, which is just a reorder.
And adding the section 11-3.
Yep.
Those two changes, which is comfortable with.
Do we need to move to do that?
It'd be good to have a motion to.
Yeah. I will start and move that at our next regular meeting for September, we open a public hearing on the proposed revisions to our subdivision regulations. Do I second?
I would second that.
Thank you. Thank you. All, any discussion? All, any discussion?
The data that we need to public should be September twelfth?
September twelfth. Fantastic. And, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right. And then, also, I'd like to just request, Gary, that we send correspondence to the board of selectmen, the zoning commission, natural resources commission, inland wetlands if you feel they need it. Yeah. And then, any pertinent town staff. Town engineer. And actually, if you could also make sure that we are running the new section on taxes by the assessor and tax collector to make sure that they are comfortable with it, that would be great, too. Certainly don't want a misfire there. I think I listed everyone that works here. Okay. Hey, well, anybody else that you guys want to send it to? Family members out of town or...
But I believe if I get it out next Monday, that will be this really very valuable thing, I think, this.
Okay.
Shooting for that, I'll let you know if it's, if it's a problem.
Great. Thank you. Okay. We do not have new business tonight, which brings us to our final item of adjournment. Would anyone like to move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Any seconds?
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Last meeting, last meeting, I should have let you go.
All right.